I'd like to call this meeting to order for the Board of Supervisors for June 20, 2023. Rule call, please, Mr. Veder.
Hall.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Treoka.
Here.
Leyland.
Here. Would everyone please join us for a moment of silence to reflect on our actions today? Thank you. Would you now join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item one is the agenda received as proposed or as amended.
I want to make just one small change.
All right.
Item number seven, recognizing public safety telecommunications as first responders.
Okay. Public safety. Otherwise, just add in the republic.
Yep.
Okay, Sue Dene, thank you.
Move to approve?
Second.
Then moved and seconded. The agenda is approved with that. Item two, public comments. Is there anyone in the audience today that would like to comment on something that is not on today's agenda? Anyone on Zoom? All right. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll move on to item three, claims and payments. Resolution that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlement of such claims as allowed.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Weidner.
Good morning, Board. Our total payments today are $814,166.09, a little bit larger than what we've been having. And some of the significant things in there, we are paying for a vehicle for the sheriff's office, $32,813.50. We are paying a large payment toward the Hickory Hills wastewater treatment, $298,383.43. And then just a lot of routine bills in addition to that. And the sheriff's, oh, we are also paying the refunds from dispatch for prior year, fiscal '22. And the sheriff's 60-40 fund, we're making payments of $5,908.16. And everything appears to be in order unless anyone has questions.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none? We had a motion and a second, so please answer as your name is called.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item four, receive project updates from department heads and elected officials.
Morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer.
Morning.
Just several updates on our projects. We have our Washburn Road paving project, for the most part, is completed. There's some minor items for the contractor to finish. Other than that, our bridge on Pointer Road, they did pour the deck on that last week, so that's a major milestone in that project. We also have some smaller projects that we're finishing up. There's a Garderell project out on Elkhorn Road, Dunkerton Road, that just finished last week. And also, we have our bridge repair project. There's three bridges in that contract. Two of them are complete, and a little more to finish here this fall. Other than that, our maintenance crews are just out hauling rock and leading roads this week. Any questions?
Everyone busy.
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Good morning, Board. Amanda Fezremire, Human Resources Director.
Morning.
Just really quick, wanted to remind that we have all staff training next week, the 28th, 29th, and 30th, for professional development sessions focused around communication, workplace conflict, workplace culture, as well as excellence in leadership. So we've been communicating that out, encouraging department heads to support their staff to make it to at least one or two of these trainings. I know it's a busy time for everyone, but I'm really pushing for everyone to, you know, just offer that time for people to get out of the routine work that they're in at their desk and have an opportunity to have in-person training sessions. So that's coming up next week. The Wellmark cards have all been distributed, and so far, it sounds like people are receiving them. One difference is that with dependents, you don't see their name on it, it's just the employee's name on it. So just trying to communicate that, so that we've had a few questions about that. And the pharmacy cards from Navitas should be coming out here in time as well. We've also communicated to staff on the eSuite for time cards that we are in the process of doing all the across-the-boards and the pay increases and the changes for fiscal year '24. So we'll be busy doing that through July 12th, and then hopefully everybody's pay looks correct. So any questions at all, anything with regards to human resources?
Great.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and then policy review will be shortly after the closed session and adjournment for the Board of Supervisors meeting, so.
Good luck with that. That's great. Good morning.
Good morning, Board. Kylan Emrick, interim director for Public Health. I just have a couple of quick updates for you all. And if you were at our, or listened in to our Public Health Board meeting, our Board of Health meeting, these are repeats, but I just wanted to make sure that you all were aware. So at the April Board of Health meeting, the Board of Health just voted via resolution to approve the official name of our department as Blackhawk County Public Health. So our communication team, led by Gabby Dewitt, who I think many of you know, updated our communications plan to reflect these changes. And efforts to change our name over all of our materials will be ongoing, so you'll see that transition kind of happening over time as we use things up and replace them. We'll make that switch with the name change. I do have the resolution with me if you want to see a copy of it, but essentially, it's just to kind of make things more efficient and clear with our communications, so our customers and the public are aware, excuse me, of who we are and our identity to align with our brand standards that were done in 2020. Also, I know that there are many departments recruiting right now. We are not excluded from that. We're recruiting for seven positions, and we are excited that we have three starting in July. An admin aide, our emergency preparedness specialist that the board approved with our FY '24 budget, and a dental hygienist. And then finally, I just wanted to bring your attention to the fact that in late May, the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services released the 2022 Local Public Health System Survey, and they held a webinar to go over findings. They also announced HHS Health and Human Services Delivery System Assessment that's planned for the fall of 2023. And this assessment will inform recommendations and rationales for options for service delivery maps and funding models for the local health and human services system. Last week, a press release went out from Iowa Department of Health and Human Services announcing the vendor that they've chosen to complete that assessment. And the press release indicated that the assessment would start as soon as last week. And so the programs that are going to be included in this assessment include local governmental public health and environmental health, so our department, our ISML program, WIC programs, maternal and child health programs, family planning programs, tobacco community partnerships, DCAT, Community Partnerships for Protecting Children, mental health regions, community centers for behavioral health, integrated provider networks, aging and disability resource centers, area agencies on aging, early childhood Iowa boards, community action agencies, emergency preparedness regions, and local public health that deliver Medicaid services. So it's a pretty large assessment. I do anticipate that the results of the assessment will influence actions taken in the legislative session, this upcoming legislative session, much like the state reorganization bill went through last legislative session. So right now, we're mostly monitoring and watching to see how this assessment goes, but we do fully anticipate that it's going to impact us in the future and hope that we are able to participate and provide our own feedback to that assessment. So those are the updates I have for you. Any questions for me?
Thank you for that information, though. I think it's good to share it with all of us, so thank you. Anyone else in the room?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Assistant T.J. Konigsfeld. The legislation recently passed a 65 and older property tax homestead exemption, and July 1st is the deadline. It's actually extended to July 3rd since July 1st falls on a weekend. So just getting the word out there, we've had some notification in the paper, news, but most of it seems to be word of mouth. It's a simple form. You can do it online. We have it online. You can do it electronically. You can file it in person here. You can mail it as well. So recommend doing that if you're 65 and older as of January 1st, 2023. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Looks like a lot of people have been taking advantage of the app, but I'm probably missing quite a few, too, I suppose.
Yeah, I think we just don't know. We don't have ages, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom that has any updates? All right. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to item five, minutes approved for June 13, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. Item six, consent agenda. The following items are acted upon by a single resolution unless there's something that someone wishes to remove from there and be discussed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item seven, proclamations, recognizing public safety telecommunications as first responders. If this is something Supervisor Treoka you'd like to address first?
Yeah, I mean, several years ago, the state took action to generate law to recognize our public safety communicators as first responders. And this would be a great time for us to have our marketing director to get the word out, because some people still don't recognize them as first responders, so I thought this was the least the board could do to take that action to make the public and some of our businesses more aware. Grant, do you have a copy of it? If you don't, I do.
Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require law enforcement, fire, or emergency medical services, and when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our law enforcement officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained by citizens who contact the Blackhawk County Consolidated Communication Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our law enforcement officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the public safety telecommunications of Blackhawk County have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each telecommunicator has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job, therefore be it resolved that the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors reaffirms that our telecommunications are recognized as first responders as per Iowa Code Section 80B11C in honor of those whose diligence and professionalism keeps our communities and citizens safe.
Thank you. I have a question. Are other counties doing this, or is this just something?
They typically do do it once a year.
All right. So this is done, oh, every year, recognizing?
In recognition of public safety telecommunications month.
Move to approve?
Second.
This is a proclamation. Any more discussion or questions? Then please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Thank you. Item eight, contracts and agreements. Resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County Social Services and the State of Iowa Judicial Branch for reimbursement to the judicial hospitalization referee for services performed from July 1, 2023, to June 30, 2024, in Blackhawk County in an amount not to exceed $55,299.11, which is of that 70%, of which will be paid by County Social Services, and 30% of which will be paid by the county. Be approved and direct the chair to sign. This is contingent on the approval of County Social Services approving as well, and that meeting is June 28. And so Mike will explain a little bit why we're doing this before their meeting, I think, was to have this in place for July 1st.
Yeah, my understanding was that Chief Judge Leecar communicated with us about this and wanted to make sure that this was in place before July 1, and asked if the county would be willing to take lead or had any issue with that. I don't see any reason we're going to put it off. I don't have any problem with the terms of this agreement. And they're substantially similar to what we've had in the past. They've changed a few boilerplate provisions, but nothing that substantially changes our position relative to it.
Thank you, Mike. And I know I had reached out to Lena, I to see if she'd be available today, and she was on vacation this week. And then Judge Leecar mentioned that she was in Des Moines. She could call in if needed, but Mike was kindly able to handle it for us if we have questions. He did review it, so.
I think she had that recommendation.
Move to approve?
Second.
Then moved and seconded. There's no further discussion. Please answer as your name is called.
Treoka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item B, resolution that the contract between Blackhawk County and Juvenile Court Services, First Judicial District of Iowa, for the purpose of enabling the county to provide fiscal agent services for intensive community support funds effective from July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2024, with the option to extend for up to five additional one-year extensions, be approved and direct the chair to sign.
So moved.
Second.
And Mike, I don't know if you want to speak to this, or Michelle, whoever.
Well, I can speak to it a little bit. This, so this contract has to do with JCS, something that apparently we enter into every few years. I believe this is the first time I had to review this contract. Review took a little while. There had to be some back and forth with our risk managers to make sure that we had the required insurance that the state was now requiring. I don't believe they required all of it in the past. And it turned out we did, except I believe for one area, and then we were able to procure that, and I believe no cost. And otherwise, got JCS to agree that they would pay the cost if there was a cost. So in any event, it was a long contract, but in the end, it was satisfactory, and therefore, we can recommend going forward with this. And I don't think we, I think this is something that we have to do on top of that. The real question was the terms of the contract. We've gotten through those.
Thank you. There any further questions or comments? This is a resolution, and please answer as your name is called.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item C, resolution to approve 28E agreement between Blackhawk County and the City of Cedar Falls defining right-of-way maintenance activities, including but not limited to general roadway repair, excuse me, winter maintenance and bridge inspections on various roads surrounding the city limits of Cedar Falls, be approved as recommended by Katherine Nicholas County Engineer.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded. Ryan?
Ryan Brennan, Assistant County Engineer. This is just an update to our current agreement with the City of Cedar Falls. There's just some minor revisions to some of the limits that we each maintain, as long as well as some just updates to what is considered maintenance, so just kind of a further definition for that in the agreement, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions, comments? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item D, resolution to select the best bid for the development of a Blackhawk County logo to Corkery Creative LLC in the amount of $12,500 as recommended by the rebranding/Logo Committee.
So moved.
Second?
Then moved and seconded. Any comments or questions?
I'll just speak real quick. Thanks to the marketing committee, which was Chairwoman Leyland, Al Yu, Rory, Ashley Bass, Ryan Brennan, Grant Veder, Sandy Smith, Karen Scholwaltzer, and Michelle Weidner for reviewing what I believe was eight total proposals, over 200 pages of proposals. Scoring all of those, we met, we met with the top three agencies for some follow-up, and yeah, just appreciate everyone's work on the process so far.
Great. Thank you. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Treoka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Thank you. Item nine, other business. Resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received for Murphy Tractor and Equipment, Waterloo, Iowa, bid opening June 12th, for the purchase of one John Deere 250P excavator for fiscal year '24 for the Blackhawk County Secondary Roads Department with a bid of $225,114, be approved as recommended by Katherine Nicholas County Engineer.
So moved.
So unmoved.
Moved and seconded. Ryan, would you like to comment?
Yeah, so this is just the bids we received here a week ago for our John Deere excavator. The John Deere from Murphy Tractor was the lowest bid. We did work with them to make a few adjustments. One of the attachments they provided was slightly different than what we requested. That actually did have a reduction in the price. We also did work with them on the warranty side of it as well to make some minor adjustments. The warranty adjustments did also reduce our overall costs, so that's why this cost we're presenting today is different from the bids we opened.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions for Ryan? Please answer as your name is called.
Treoka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. Item B, motion that the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Al Yu, Information Technology Director, be approved and direct the chair to sign for same to purchase four VM host servers for the sheriff's office for $39,942.92 from CDWG.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Al?
Morning, Board. Al Yu, IT Director. These are four physical servers that will host all the virtual servers, if that makes sense. So you can host more servers on each physical server.
Now, we know exactly what you're talking about. Thank you.
Can I have, answer any questions for you?
Any questions or comments? Okay.
This is coming from the ARPA, Linda, or the loss reserves?
I believe, I was going to say clarification, it was from the sheriff's budget. Correct?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. This is a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item C is discussion of the county providing IT services to EMA. And I just roughly did a, I was going to say, here's a copy, or somebody handed a copy of it, so Al's going to talk to it, but it's there for any review. So Al?
So a while back, EMA Coordinator Mindy Benson approached me about providing services for EMA. In the past, I think we have assisted her with a few onesie-twosie issues. I believe she was contracting hours through an MSB called Ergen. You guys are probably familiar with, kind of same company like ACES. And I think she has since run out of those hours purchased or whatever contract they had, so she wanted to pursue support through the county, and I'm not opposed to that. And a while back, Mr. Trynand drafted this MOU. It was, I think it was probably like eight months ago, I think, where we're.
It was a while back.
It was a while back.
And I had to be kind of reminded of it, but it, we kept it fairly straightforward, given the relationship we have with the EMA, though.
Yep. So I have, like, I've added just a few items on there, but it's, the MOU itself is fairly straightforward.
And the items you're talking about referred to, I said, when we talked about this, it was really clarification, just to make it more known to both parties of what they were responsible for and what we weren't, kind of spell out as much as we could, so there wasn't questions, but.
Yep. But most of the, if you see that, most of the hardware and licensing will still fall in the responsibility of the EMA to cover. We would obviously cover the services, either physical or remote. But yeah, so things like the 365 license, they would use our 365 tenant, but they're responsible for paying the subscription fee of that, which is not a lot. And then phones as well. They would purchase the phones that we have, our IP phones, to place out there, and it would be based off our system.
And you did mention earlier, Al, in a conversation we'd had, I know, as far as ability to track ours, so if we needed to adjust or look at that, whether it's more or less, you know, in the next year, that would be there, because we weren't sure what that was going into this.
Yep. We have a help desk system, and then we can track our hours logged for all the tickets that would be tied to EMA. Also, they are, they are planning on getting a 50% person from Public Health, I believe?
July 10th, she was supposed to start, they mentioned, at the EMA meeting. Or he, it might have been a he. I think it was a he.
Oh, was that a question? I didn't know. Anyone need to answer a question there?
I'm sorry. No.
Okay, sorry.
I don't have a question.
Okay.
And this was all subject to, anything could change in this, I think, is from, anything from the cost to the terms to what was included in it. It just seemed to be, with the favor of the two gentlemen, Mr. Yu and Mr. Trynand, this was an agreement that seemed to be doable, and the $2,000 was even negotiable if we want, I mean, not from the board's standpoint, if that's what they wanted to change, but it was like, seemed appropriate, correct, Al? I mean, you thought, for the.
Has that been approved by the EMA board?
No, no. It had to come, the offer was coming from this board first, and then if this is what the board feels is they'd like to do and extend them this contract, then they would take a look at it and approve or not.
So if we approve it today, what happens if they don't approve it?
Well, and we don't have to approve it today. It was really just kind of subject, because we do have the time, we can certainly put it on next week's agenda and still meet the timelines for everything that was needed. So this was giving everybody an opportunity to take a look at it if they wish, so.
If Al's.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. If Al's comfortable, I'm comfortable.
Yeah, I like, I like the idea of tracking the hours. I think it is a great way to make sure that both parties are protected.
Sure, sure. I think to Supervisor Hall's point, the $2,000, you know, we'll be able to tell whether that's a good figure after the hours are tracked. We'll at least have a better idea.
Exactly. Yeah. And if I remember right, we honestly, EMA doesn't call us very often, so it's really just a few times a year, I would imagine. But we're comfortable with doing this. I mean, I know we're short-staffed right now, but we're comfortable, we can handle it, so.
Sure, Mike. Well, we'll probably put it back on the agenda then for next week for some type of action, so if anybody does see anything with it they don't like, or we can discuss it then?
All right.
Okay, great. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Item 10 is the work session, discussion, possible board action on the county projects for the ARPA. Anything anybody wants to discuss today? No?
No.
Okay. I'll take a look at the list myself.
Yeah.
Now, item 11, any reports or information from the board? Nothing?
No.
Okay. Super. Closed session, item 12. This is a resolution that pursuant to the provisions of the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors. Oh, wait a minute. Before I go into that, let me just say this to this board, I guess, because we did have it on there, regarding the oversight meeting that was going to be scheduled for this week. I did send out an email that just proposed that, you know, we had the meeting scheduled for Wednesday if we needed more time on that, because some of the mayors had their council meetings tonight. And so I'm going to, I'll email everyone after the board meeting to say if we need to move that to a Thursday or next week, do that. And I wanted to at least make the board aware of that. And also to mention that there is a meeting scheduled for Thursday this week to meet with the Humane Society worker, I'm sure, what staff person, director or executive director of that, just provide information back to the board on where she's at with that contract, so just an FYI. And sorry about that.
What was the time again for tomorrow's meeting?
If we had, if we did on Wednesday, it was 1:30, and that's why I thought we were kind of pushing up to getting that agenda out, as well as not hearing back from the super, or the council and the mayors that had their meeting tonight. And so it was like, that's why I thought we might need a little more time.
Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking they had the meetings last night.
And they, no, it's tonight. So I just thought, yeah, that might have been rather premature, so we'll go another day or next week, anyway. So now, I apologize, but going into the closed session, resolution that pursuant to the provisions of the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors shall proceed into closed session with the attorney to discuss the purchase or sale of particular real estate only where premature disclosure could be reasonably expected to increase the price the government would receive for the property or reduce the price the government would receive for the property. The minutes and audio recording of a session closed under this paragraph shall be available for public examination when the transaction discussed is complete pursuant to Iowa Code 21.5J.
So moved.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Please answer as your name is called.
Treoka?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Leyland?
Yes. So we need to close the doors, and I think there's nobody around the corner that we can't see, right? What was that?